Good afternoon. I'm going to call the May 14, 2014 budget work session to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco, Hart, Hotchkiss, Muriel, Rouse, White, Mayor Snyder.
Here. I know that both councilmembers White and Rouse will be here momentarily. They're running late. So before we get started with the work session, I want to explain just—I know we have some requests here for some outside funding and have you be able to speak ahead of time. And I just wanted to mention that what we're doing today is hearing the budget presentation for both Community Development Department and the library. We've been—as many of you know—have had multiple budget hearings with different departments. On June 2 is the date where the council will meet and look at everything that's been presented to us either by one of us or by staff or by the outside community for funding that's not currently in the budget document. And then that will be the date that council directs staff to amend the budget any which way. So we won't be making any decisions today about any of these outside requests, but we do want to hear from you since you're here to present to us. But you may want to be here on the 2nd. You don't have to be, but that is—and that is at 3:00.
3:00 PM. That's correct.
3:00 PM. Starts at 3:00 PM. And if that should take longer, we do have another session on the 4th, but we're hoping to get it all done on the 2nd. So that's the process there. So with that, I want to ask, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda, not the Community Development or the Library? Okay, so I'll close that part of public comment and I'll go to the request for outside funding for now, and then we'll go to the Community Development Budget Work Session. So we'll start with Roger Durling and then Bob Bogel. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, seated council members. First of all, I'd like to thank you for being a partner with us in the Barra Festival. We pride in making every partnership—we have to be—to be mutually beneficial, and I kindly request your investment in our partnership to be increased by $25,000. This past festival, 2014, the estimated festival attendance was 85,000 people. This was an increase of 10,000 people from the previous 2013 festival. Based on ticket sales, and 39% of this past year's attendees came from outside of Santa Barbara. That's a total of 33,150,000. For 2015, we're expanding the festival and we're estimating 5,000 additional guests, with 1,950 of those new attendees being from out of town. So for our 30th anniversary, we're estimating a total of 35,100 attendees from outside. The Santa Barbara South Coast Visitor Profile and Tourism and Economic Impact Study of October 2013 said that the median spending of our out-of-town visitors is $255.75. 35,100 visitors for 2015 could bring a projected economic impact of $8,976,825. That's a return on investment close to $118 to a dollar. So I kindly, you know, ask for an increase of 25,000, and we will return 118 on investment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bob Bogel will be followed by Fred Sweeney and then Jefferson Litton.
How are you all? I have brought a famous homeless person that we just housed last Thursday after 20 years on the street. His name is Pirate. I just wanted him to be introduced to you all today.
Welcome.
Pirate. Casa partners with the city to provide 48,000 bed nights per year and 144,000 meals. We have requested an increase from $5.42 to $15.63 per bed night. The new Casa has a new model where we have a 100-day program, and Pirate graduated in Phase 2 of that, so he got out early. We are trying to focus on Santa Barbara County residents as a priority. We have fully cooperating with the Milpus Task Force, and we have made great headway with them, and we're going to cooperate 100% with them. We're trying to increase our respite care for the homeless that are sick and unable to protect themselves on the street. And my last comment is we save the city a lot of resources by housing the homeless the way we do of our new model. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Sweeney? Enjoy your new home, Pirate.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council. I'm here wearing my hat today as president—or president chair of the Single Family Design Board. And so I came officially to request that you consideration for putting back the stipends for the review boards. I understand that HLC and ABR are also in the same position. Our board took an unanimous vote at our last meeting requesting that. Just a brief background, in addition to the hours we spend at the actual meetings, I know in our board, because of our purview to look at neighborhood compatibility issues, we make every effort to go out and see every single house. So for most of that—that takes—most of us—that takes about 1 to 2 hours every 2 weeks at minimum. And if you're on consent calendar, that's probably an additional 1 hour in between to drive around the city and look at the various sites. So we understand we're the soft money, and we understand in the past that we've been recognized—the struggle the city has had with budgets, so we haven't said anything. But we're now looking at perhaps an opportunity to consider reinstating the stipends. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Jefferson Litton.
Good afternoon, Mayor Snyder and fellow council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you this afternoon. Before I begin, I want to apologize about the misinformation in the letter that I sent out to you yesterday. Just to be abundantly clear, the county in fiscal year 2014-15, staff is proposing allocating $6,000 towards a feasibility study that would cost $100,000 in fiscal year 15 and 16. So apologize for that information, and thank you very much to Jim Armstrong for helping us sort that out. So moving on—
Can't you explain what the item is, just so people who are watching know what it is you're talking about?
Yeah. So for those of you that aren't familiar with the community choice aggregation, what it is, is a city or a county can create its own service territory, where they choose where their electricity is procured from. So they're purchasing the electricity. CCAs have launched in Marin County and in Sonoma County, and they're providing electricity with a higher percentage of renewable generation for prices that are cheaper—or comparable or cheaper—to what they would get from the existing utility. An additional benefit is that that money that goes to the CCA stays in the local community, as opposed to going to investor-owned utilities and their investors. So the Community Environmental Council has spoke before this council over the past 8, 10 years, many times, about the benefits of CCA. But the difference now is, like I've mentioned, there are 2 existing CCAs that are proving that this is feasible and this can be done in our community. Like I mentioned before, the electricity can be prices that are cheaper or comparable than what they're paying to the utility, as well as those local benefits. And additionally, it provides cities and counties a powerful tool in reducing their GHG emissions to meet AB 32 standards. So in Santa Barbara's Climate Action Plan, 15% of our target reductions are expected to come from community choice aggregation. So given these benefits and the fact that the city—or the county—will likely move forward to funding CCA in this year, we ask that the city council—the city—indicate formal interest in working with the county towards pursuing CCA. And contingent upon the county moving forward in this fiscal year, allocate $5,000 in the fiscal year 14 and 15 budget to fund—towards evaluating the key stages of a CCA and towards seeking out grants to fund that feasibility study in 15 and 16. So given the timeliness of what the county is doing right now, the fact that CCA has proven, we think that this is a great opportunity for the city to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then Dave Harrell and Leah Manfredi, you were asking about human services. Was it a request for funding or a general—you're welcome to come up now. You're welcome to stay and watch the whole presentation, but that's fine, if you want to do that now.
Good afternoon.
Go ahead.
My name is David Harrell. Oh, okay. Let's see. I'm a member at Jody House, and I just wanted you all to know how much I benefit and all the members there benefit from the Human Services Fund. And I am here to encourage you to place more money in the general fund that helps us and other organizations in town. They do a remarkable job, and I'd like to see them keep going. I'm not a public speaker.
No, you did just great.
Thank you very much.
And Ms. Manfredi.
Hi. I'm Leah. I'm the Development and Programs Specialist at Jody House. And just to mirror what Dave mentioned, we are so appreciative of the funding we receive from the city this year, and it's been helping our programs move in a really positive direction. And we hope to continue to be able to serve survivors of brain injury and their loved ones as best as we can. And we know that the benefit—that we serve the community and other organizations that also rely on city funding would be greatly benefited if you increased the overall Human Services Fund to be allowed—for other organizations to compete for. And so we just urge you to consider that. But we thank you for everything you've done for us so far.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you all. You're welcome to stay as long as you'd like. And those of you who spoke asking for other funds, you may want to contact those who are a little late today, just to let them know you were here. Just a thought. I don't know. And with that, I'll turn it over to Sue Gray or Ms. Weiss for the Community Development Budget Presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and council members. Betty Weiss, Acting Community Development Director. Our presentation will be given by Sue Gray, the Business Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. We're happy to provide you with our fiscal year—recommended fiscal year 2015 budget. I'm going to go over a department overview first, a quick department overview, and then we'll talk about proposed changes to the originally proposed fiscal year 2015 plan, proposed fee changes, service enhancements and restorations, and then key initiatives and performance objectives. I'm going to break it down and talk about the general fund first, and then perhaps we can stop for questions if you have any, and then move on to the Redevelopment Agency Retirement Obligation Fund, Affordable Housing Fund, and the Home and Community Development Block Grant Funds. So first, for the overview, this is an organizational chart for our entire department. We have 3 divisions: Planning, Administration, Housing and Human Services, and Building and Safety. Total of 11 programs, 6 funds, and just under 68 full-time equivalent employees. This slide shows the total community development budget by fund. The largest portion is general fund, and close behind that is the RDA Retirement Obligation Fund. However, all but $310,000 of that is used to pay back the bonds after the dissolution of the RDA. And then we have our CDBG Fund, Home Fund, and our Affordable Housing Fund. This one shows the same appropriations, broken down by division. Planning is the largest, followed by Admin, Housing and Human Services, which include the other funds—the CDBG, Affordable Housing and Home, and then Building and Safety. The RDA obligation is kind of just there for a note again. Most of that is bond repayments. So our proposed changes to the fiscal year 2015 plan for the general fund, this slide is showing them broken down by object category: salaries and benefits, supplies, allocated costs, special projects, equipment, and other. You'll note that in total, we are reducing our original plan by $225,000. And I'm going to be going over these by program by program, because it's a little easier to explain that way. So this slide shows the Admin, Housing and Human Services Division programs. The $111,000 increase in administration is due primarily to the addition of the Full-Time Community Development Director, which was previously budgeted at 50% time, and also because the Economic Development Program was moved to the mayor and council budget along with the City Arts Advisory Program. There were some community development staff costs allocated to Economic Development, and those were moved into administration as well. And so like I said, the Economic Development and Arts is now under the Arts and Community Promotions Program budget under mayor and council. The $14,000, 421 increase in the Human Services Program is due to a 2% increase that was approved during the Human Services application process. That totals $12,565. And there was also a 2% increase for the Winter Homeless Shelter that's at Casa Esperanza that totals $1,525. And then the small increase for the Rental Housing Mediation Program, that is basically an increase that we've received in allocated costs: desktop information services, workers' comp. And that kind of goes across the board for all the programs. There was a slight increase in our allocated costs. Next, these are the planning programs. This one I'm wanting you to look at as a whole—for the whole division. The basic increase—the almost $100,000 increase—that is due to a proposed addition of the Zoning Plan Check position that we'll talk about later. We also had the various increases in allocated costs, workers' comp. And then some staff have been moved around between the programs. That's why you see some of the variance in those. Oh, and we are projecting—which we'll talk about later—also projecting a decrease in the planning revenues of about $21,000, and so the expenses have been reduced accordingly. Okay, this is Building and Safety's programs. Once again, we had some allocated costs that went up. Approximately $20,000 of the $43,819 increase is due to budgeted step increases among staff in that division. And we added $8,000 increase for the Training Line Item that goes along with the State Accessibility Fee, which we budgeted for this year. So it comes in, we get money off of planning permits for the State Accessibility Fee, and it goes directly to training for accessibility. So the key budget changes: the new zoning plan check position that we are proposing for the Planning Division, and Ms. Weiss can answer questions about that position later if you have any. We are proposing to bring our building inspector back to Building and Safety full-time for several years during the budget downturn in the economy. We shared our building inspector with Water Resources. And so although we had him budgeted full-time in our budget, we also had a line item of income coming in from Public Works that we would basically bill half of his time for. So we are hoping that our fees come in enough to cover this position, because we would like him to come back in July. Again, the Economic Development Arts Advisory Committee moved, and the 2% increase for Human Services and Winter Shelter. This slide shows our general fund revenues and the changes in them. The $10,000 is the State Accessibility Fee that I mentioned earlier, and this shows the $21,000 reduction for planning fees that we just discussed. And then for Building and Safety, that $49,471—it's—we've increased it in fees, but we've reduced it in the line item that we build for the building inspector position. So it's a wash on this. So again, just a summary, we've had a slight decrease in planning revenues and basically no net change for Building and Safety. Okay, so this is where we kind of outlined really what we've included in our proposed budget is the Zoning Plan Check position and the building inspector back full-time. The other potential requests are things that we've heard—that you've actually heard about 2 of them already, and probably all 3. The Design Board and Commission stipends, that's about $35,000 if those are reinstated. The county, I believe, has already sent a letter of request for the 211 program totaling about $34,000. And Casa Esperanza you just heard from. So our proposed fees. Every year, we do an assessment on the appropriateness of the fees in terms of the cost recovery and our subsidy for each line item. This year, we're proposing to increase the planning fees by 3% in most of the line items except for appeals, the sum of the coastal plan review, the exclusions, exemptions, and recommendations, the mailing list service, staff hourly rate, non-DART modifications, and zoning information reports. And likewise, in Building and Safety, we are proposing a 3% increase in most line items except the ones you see listed. I'm not going to read them all, but basically, these we are proposing to keep the same so that contractors are—they have incentive to get these small—these small permits done, you know, without—there—these are things that are pretty much safety-related, and they're smaller. And Mr. Estrella is here too, and he can answer questions on that. Performance and work objectives for the general fund. For planning, we are hoping to increase the plan check on-time completion. This is directly related to the new position. Continue with the new zoning ordinance project. Continue with zoning information report process improvements, the emergency shelter ordinance, the housing element update, coastal land use program update, and the permit database upgrade, which is currently the tide mark. For Building and Safety, continue outreach to local architects and contractors, the use of hourly employees to maintain plan check review timeframe commitments. For administration, coordinate the city's response to homeless issues, which includes participating with the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness. And for rental housing mediation, provide 1,400 residents with information, consultation, and mediation services. And I wanted to give you a little update on the rental mediation program, because I know in the last couple of years, we've talked about that one in some detail. 46% of their issues are for termination of tenancy issues. We are proposing a status quo budget this year. The Human Services Grant that they apply for annually was increased from $23,000 to $25,000 for the coming year. And the Housing Authority, we are still asking for a $5,000 contribution from them every year. They've contributed this year and last year, and we're hoping for it next year also. Staff is also participating in a fundraiser on May 31, which will bring in a little extra money—not—we don't expect it to bring in a substantial amount. And we have—this year, for the first time, we're asking the other jurisdictions—the city of Goleta, city of Carpinteria, and the county of Santa Barbara—for a 9% increase in their contribution, because it seems like we go for years and years with the same amount, and it's been probably 4 or 5 years since we've had any kind of increase from them, and yet our costs keep going up. So we've heard back from the city of Goleta. They said they're putting that in their budget. We still are waiting to hear from the city of Carpinteria and the county of Santa Barbara. Okay. And with that, we can answer questions on the general fund or keep going.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
How many people are we going to have in the zoning and plan check? I guess that's at the counter. I don't know.
Councilman Hotchkiss, the Planning Division program on zoning includes the staffing the counter, zoning plan check, and zoning enforcement, as well as the zoning information reports, staff hearing officer, lead staff for the modifications in that process, and then our staff assigned to the new zoning ordinance is all in the zoning program. So we have a supervisor, and then we have the new staff for the zoning ordinance update, new zoning ordinance. We have 1 plan checker present. We have 1 lead staff for the staff hearing officer. We have 1 for ZIRs, 1 for enforcement, and 1 project planner that does it all in terms of counter-management, the tide mark upgrade, and a variety of things. So that's 7 full-time staff. We also have 2 hourly staff—part-time hourly staff—for enforcement. So that team, those are their primary assignments, but there is overlap and backup support amongst all the staff there.
So how does the additional personnel help us?
The primary assignment for the additional position will be plan check. Right now, we have 1 person assigned to the plan check as their full-time position, and in order to even approach meeting deadlines—which we are failing to do—we use not only the zoning staff, but planners throughout the whole division assist with plan check, and overtime has been how we've been trying to meet plan check timeframes. So the staffing level of 1 full-time person assigned is inadequate to meet, and this is the plan check of all the building permit applications. Our prior P3 goal was to meet our timeframes 65% of the time. With the new position, we've updated our P3 goal to meet the deadlines 85% of the time. So that's where you'll see the most significant output of that position, although they will help in other regards as well.
Is it possible also to reduce the time allotted for specific functions with additional personnel?
The time allotted for the plan check process in particular is really a factor of all the various land development team members, and that's managed primarily by Building and Safety. So we have our matrix of timeframes. The division with the longest timeframe is Building and Safety, and so planning comes within that overall timeframe. Within the land development team, I don't—I don't really see the potential right now to reduce the timeframes. People are struggling to meet the current timeframes. And with this added position, as I've reported, we expect to be able to do that much more frequently. But there are constraints, not only within Building and Safety, but Public Works as well. So we have discussed the concern about the length of time for plan check, but we don't feel we're really in a position to increase the overall time.
Do we have any way of judging how well we're doing compared to other cities? I don't have a standard, so I wouldn't know. In other words, do we do it faster than Ventura, or Santa Maria, or Pasadena?
We have not—excuse me, Councilmember Hotchkiss. We have not done any recent outreach with other jurisdictions to see where that. Over the past years, though, we have been generally consistent with timeframes in plan check, and in some cases, even—even a little quicker. Having said that, this past year has been a real doozy in that coming back January 1, we have—we've had a tremendous increase in plan checks, and that was due to the new 2013 codes becoming effective. And so we had a tremendous rush, and that set us back for several, several months. And I would say at this point, we're just barely catching up. And the reason why we're catching up is because we recently brought in an hourly plan check, and that seems to be helping. And so we're turning things around a little bit, but it's been—it's been quite a while since we were able to meet all our timeframe commitments. And having said that, while we have met many timeframe commitments, it's not that we just simply don't meet those commitments.
Do we talk to Contractors Association and others and say, "How we doing? Give us a report card"? I know you don't want to do that too often, but—
Well, as a matter of fact, they're—they're very vocal, and will express their—
Yeah, I know.
—comments on how we do. And the general feeling is—is while we can use some improvement in some areas, I think we get a pretty good grade as far as being a little bit more efficient and providing a little bit more customer service, generally speaking.
Different question entirely. The $35,000 that you mentioned, would that be to give stipends to all proposed commissions and boards?
Councilman Hotchkiss, the $35,000 is based on the Single Family Design Board, which is a 7-member board, the Architecture Board of Review, 7 members, and the Historical Landmarks Commission, 9 members. Their regular meeting schedule for the year of meeting every other—
Their regular meeting schedule for the year, a meeting every other week, with each member attending receiving a $50 stipend per meeting that they attend. And then additional funds for the consent reviewer. We have consent calendars for all three boards every week, and the consent reviewer, when we had stipends, they received $25 for their added meeting of consent review. And so we factored all that in and came up with $35,000.
Does Planning Commission get something now?
The Planning Commission funding of $50 per meeting was put in the budget, I think, two years ago, and so that is currently being carried over as a status quo funding for the Planning Commission, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
So just to be clear, this would restore the historical levels of stipends for the review boards?
Yes, those three design review boards had received stipends prior for approximately, I think, three years.
Okay. And then, can you give us an update on the status of the zoning information report improvement process? Just where are we with that?
Yes. We have a committee of members of the Planning Commission, three members of the Commission, and anywhere from five to six members of the Santa Barbara Association Realtors meeting, and I think we've had five meetings so far. We have our final meeting scheduled for, in a week or two, or early June for this phase. We've received, well, staff is participating in that, but the dialogue has been really great with input from the building and safety division, as well as the city attorney's office. And so staff is going to compile a proposal based on all of the ideas and discussion from that group, and then return that report to the group. And I think our last meeting with the group is the first week of June, and it'll take us approximately a month to produce the report, and then we'll have that whole group review it. After that, we'll go to the Planning Commission. This effort is really in response to the Planning Commission wanting to collaborate more before they forward their recommendation to the council on changes in the program. And the focus really is on how to resolve problems identified in the ZIR process where the record is unclear, and we have a violation, either a newly identified violation that no one's ever seen before, or a discrepancy from prior. We've talked about a lot of things that we're just doing already, improving our timeframe, our turnaround, and some communication and problem solving, but that's the focus of the effort.
So probably late summer, if I'm adding up that math, early fall to back to council?
Yes, we'll be, I think we'll be targeting late summer for Planning Commission and fall to the council, yes.
Excellent.
The, so I was looking at the P3, I think it's D25, about the 65% plan check timing piece, and it looks, according to this, the adopted of 65% and projected of 65%. So you've met your P3, and the idea is to increase it to 85% with this additional plan check staff member. Would an additional person on top of that get you to 100%? I mean, what would it take, I guess is my question, of meeting all DART deadlines? Is it just staffing? Is it looking at efficiencies?
Just specifically within the Planning Division. So we're not talking about the overall timeframes. I think it's a combination of staff time and staffing level, but also the state of our zoning ordinance and the importance of the zoning ordinance update so we can be more efficient. Working with the cumbersome document and the old records and all the discrepancies and not being, the discrepancies that we find in ZIRs, we find every day in plan check as well. So I don't, I think it's a wise investment in the zoning ordinance in addition to the added staff.
And the timing, again, of getting through the ordinance, I mean, that's going to take a while.
Yes, that's just starting right now. We, I think, are targeting fall of 2016 for a council adoption.
Right, so two years. And I know, I mean, it's more of a policy issue, if there's some quick fixes ahead of time, but that's another discussion, it's not budget-related. I guess the question I would have moving forward is, would authorization of additional hourly staff to help transition over? Where I'm coming from is, to aim for 85% really just doesn't sit well. I mean, you know, we were, woo, 65%. I mean, one in three, one in three applications is falling short. And I know that frustrates not only the applicant, but staff, and, you know, there's customer service relations issues that come from that, and I get calls and emails, and I know you don't like it when that happens, and so I guess, you know, what can, I know there's certain structural things that we're working on that should help that situation over time, but the question is, is there some things that can be done, maybe not through a regular position, but through hourly's or other means that you may need, that we could provide in the budget, to inch up higher than that 85% threshold?
In response to, I have a couple thoughts. One is, if the Planning Division is making our timeframe 85% of the time, but 100% of the time, we're meeting the overall timeframe, that, to me, is an acceptable standard, because as I've said, the overall timeframe involves the building and safety, which has a longer time to complete all their code plan check. What would help the overall city delivery of plan check, I think is true probably in all divisions of the land development team, but specifically for our department, building and safety, does need added help from time to time. It comes in waves and cycles. So we have, in the past, had funding in the building and safety program for outside plan check services, and sometimes that's a good tool. Right now, we're using hourly staff, and we think that's an important tool for building and safety as well, to be able to have funding for hourly staff. Right now, we don't have any hourly staff specific in the budget for building and safety. I think that could be beneficial. When it comes to planning, our practice has been overtime. We have no overtime budget. We've been authorizing overtime based on salary savings. You know, we don't want to overrun the budget, but we know we have salary savings, so we've been paying overtime for plan check. So if we were to fund our effort in planning, it would, I think it would be an overtime budget. That's how we've been doing it, if we went in addition to the one new position.
Well, perhaps for, between now and June 2nd, maybe do a little analysis of what it may take and what the price tag would be. I don't want to say I'm solidly behind it at this point, but I think, what I'd like to do is see what can be done, especially because the zoning, the ZIRs and the zoning ordinance is going to take a long time to really get implemented, and once that happens, then I think the staffing issues might go down a little bit. I'm just thinking that we're seeing more and more applications now with the economy turning around, and we're kind of running to standstill in some ways. You know, we're catching up, but then the activity is also going up. So if you had more flexibility and nimbleness in hourly staff or overtime or whatever it is that works, but it's a budget issue, then we should talk about that for June 2nd and whatever that, and you can give us the big number, and it could be, you know, a portion of that or whatever, depending on what, I might be the only one thinking of this, but I'd like to at least see what the options would be for June 2nd. And then finally, also for June 2nd, if we could know for both the Film Festival and Human Services, what was the level of funding prior to the major cuts we did for the recession? That would be helpful. Okay.
Mr. Hart, did you have something else?
I just wanted to add my voice to your great focus and questions, because I'd like to know that information as well. And I guess, even pulling in Councilmember Hotchkiss's point about, is there, how much money would it take us to shorten times? You know, that's a second level of this conversation. Just, we just need to have a sense of the order of magnitude of the costs versus the time, so that we can judge that in relation to all the other requests that we're getting, because we do hear from the public a lot about this issue. And so just understanding what the trade-offs are in terms of money versus, you know, the outputs, totally understand that's the reality of the situation, but just would like to know, you know, what would an additional person, what would additional $50,000 do to that whole process? And as you said, Ms. Weiss, the ultimate issue is the end of the process, not the individual deadlines within the piece. It's like, what does it mean to the person who's applying for something? You know, how do we make that time shorter? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may respond, again, we can certainly explore this within community development, but we will also outreach to public works
Absolutely.
as part of the land development team.
Yeah, it's the big picture. Right, exactly.
Okay, any other questions up to this point?
Are we making comments about this section now?
You can, or you can wait, either way? Okay, so please continue.
Thank you. So now we will move on to the Redevelopment Agency Retirement Obligation Fund. This slide shows, again, the recommended adjustments from the original 2015 plan. Basically, there's a net zero difference for this fund. We are allowed $250,000 for the administration of the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, and we benefited from some salary savings for next year based on staff turnover in two different positions that are applied here. We have parts of different people that are charged to this program. So what we did was, we just increased the amount we have in for legal services for our city attorney's office, because in the last couple of years, we have not had enough in there to cover really all the time that is spent from them. The P3s for this fund are to prepare two recognized obligation payment schedules. We are required to submit those and get them approved by the Oversight Board and the State Department of Finance every six months to make the bond repayments, which is actually really a finance department at this point, they're doing those. To get the long-range property management plan approved, at this time, our plan has been submitted since September 2013. We just received an initial set of questions in April that we are planning on responding to in the next week or so. And then to carry out the capital projects from the leftover bond monies, the Bath Street Pocket Park, Cabrillo Pavilion and Bath House, 911 Call Center, and West Downtown Lighting. Onto the Affordable Housing Fund.
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Just quickly, without getting a lot into it, but just the questions were related to the Railroad Depot and the, from the state, the questions about?
Oh, yes. Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart. The, I believe the questions were about the Railroad Depot and Mr. Casey, and...
The Bath Street.
Oh, and the Bath Street Park.
Everything but Pasayonuevo.
Oh, okay. Lots of questions. Okay, thank you.
When do we think we're going to hear back on this? Don't know. Big question mark. Okay.
So the Affordable Housing Fund, the revenue that comes from this is the payments, a lot of them are residual receipt payments. Some of them are the actual interest plus some principal payments on our outstanding former RDA housing loans. So this year, we're projecting to have almost $600,000 in revenues, which is great. I think when we started this process, we were closer to $400,000. We've budgeted next year for $500,000, just shy of what we thought we were going to budget for in the original plan. The salaries and benefits, all of these adjustments are basically the increase in allocated costs. So those were just slight increases that we had. And in order to balance that, it's, if you see the line that says, "Reserve to fund balances", that's basically what we think we're going to be able to put to the Affordable Housing Fund balance at the end of the year, and we're just projecting a little bit less for that. And you can see in the projected fiscal year 14, we're projecting to have almost $125,000 to add to the $661,000 that's currently in that fund. And those funds, we can use for new affordable housing projects. The key initiatives for this are to preserve the affordable housing stock by monitoring and enforcing violations. We currently have 1,220 affordable rental units and 485 owner-occupied units. And they do this, they assure compliance with the affordable housing restrictions upon initial sales, resales, refinance, modifications, and subordinations. Okay.
Before you go on, I should remember the name of this, it's my, one of my favorite funds we have. It's the Affordable Overnight, the La Intraada.
Accommodation.
Accommodation, yeah. What's the balance and status of that, do you know, off the top of your head?
The balance remains the same of the principal. There's like a little over $1 million in that fund. We've been using the interest that has been earned on that, and I believe there is approximately, I want to say 20,000 left.
Okay. And remind me the name of the, of the fund? Do you remember?
It's the Overnight Affordable Accommodation Fund.
Accommodations Fund, okay, that was the...
Yes, and we've been using the interest for things like the Salvation Army. We have, currently, we have two police, restorative policing beds that we have reserved there that the restorative police officers can, when they find someone on the street who's ready to make a change and they want to make sure that they stay sober, they can go to the Salvation Army.
Okay. Mr. Hart, you might know a little bit about this fund.
I'm just too hazy, too. This is...
Oh, you should know.
Intraada extraction front from the Coastal Commission?
From the coastal side, yeah. Brings back memories, I'm sure, yes.
Okay. And this, last year, council approved a grant for $15,000 for the Warming Centers.
Right, from that fund?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I might comment on that.
Yeah.
We're having only initial conversations, but I think more will follow with the Coastal Commission staff on the issue of affordable accommodations as a mitigation and offset for development in the coastal zone that's less affordable, like high-end hotels and such, which is where this came from. And we've talked with them about how the funding, how that $1 million could be applied. I mean, it was extracted for the purpose of going to a project, and so we are getting some dialogue just going on that, as to how it might be used. And one of the comments that they had was that they could see that being used regionally if we were open to it as well. If, for example, we were to partner with some other agency or entity building a campground in the unincorporated area or something like that.
It'll have to be in the coastal zone, though, right?
Yes, in the coastal zone, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So we may not have the interest in the fund around for forever.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, now on to home and CDBG. Our home funding, as you can see from this chart, has been reduced by 56% in the last four years. There is current legislation out there that may cut it another 30% for fiscal year, the city's fiscal year 2016, it's the federal fiscal year 2015. And the mayor has sent letters to Congresswoman Lois Capps, Senator Dianne Feinstein, and Senator Barbara Boxer, asking that they fight to keep the home funding stable. And this is really important for us, because in addition to the loss of the Redevelopment Agency Housing Set Aside Funds, this reduction makes it harder and harder for the city to support the development of affordable housing projects. Staff has been looking at creative alternatives that will best utilize the limited resources that we have, and also ways to collect repayments for future projects. The key initiatives for this, 10% of our home funds can be used for administrative expenses. That totals around $38,000 for fiscal year 15, and compare that to $86,000 that we had in fiscal year 2011. It's getting harder for both the home and CDBG to maintain enough staffing, or to pay for enough staffing to really administer these programs and monitor them. The regulations have increased, not decreased, and yet we are only allowed what we can get by the amount of money that we're allocated for the grants.
This is entirely federally funded?
Yes. 90% of the home funds are required to be loaned or granted to affordable housing projects that target very low and low-income households. And the Community Development Block Grant Fund, not quite of drastic of a cut, but we've seen a 32% reduction in our grant in the last four years. The legislation that's currently on the floor reduces this fund by less than 1%, so we're looking at it being stable for another year, which would be our fiscal year 2016. And again, up to 20% can be used for administrative expenses. For fiscal year 15, that averages, it's almost $158,000 compared to $233,000 in fiscal year 11. Up to 15% can be used for public services, which is the money we combined with the general fund, human services. And at least 65% of the CDBG funds need to be used for capital projects. On March 25th, council approved the grants for the On March 25th, council approved the grants for the CDBG and Human Services, resulting in six capital projects funded and 45 public service, human service funds. And we all, we held aside another $75,000, I believe this is the third year in a row that we've done this, set aside for the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness. And with that, that completes my presentation.
Great. Just want to, I don't see any other public comment staff for this part of the presentation, so to council, Ms. Murillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for asking about the historic levels of the Human Services, the money that we take from the General Fund and put into the grant program that the Jody House people were here today referring to. So if we did decide to boost it, there's sort of a lag time, right? Because we're a year behind because of the CDBG money. Can you explain that to me?
Sure. Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Murillo. The council has already approved the fiscal year 15 grants, so that pot of money has already gone through the whole application cycle, the Community Development Human Service Committee review. So if it were to be increased for next fiscal year, we'd have to find out, you know, we'd either have to open it up again and do a whole nother process. It might be better if you're considering increasing it, waiting until fiscal year 2016 and doing it at that point.
But you'd have to put that in this budget?
No. It would go in the next year. Right now, council reserves an amount in November for the next fiscal year.
Right, so...
So the amount...
So the amount isn't in this next fiscal year's budget? We already spent it. Okay, so, so the question is, for future years, that request, if we wanted to boost it, would be, would occur in October?
Yes, it would come to you at the end of October.
When we do the first, the first tier, second tier process and, okay. And the $75,000 for C3H was taken off the top of whatever money...
Three years ago, it was taken out off of the pot available for Human Service funding.
And it was, and that was never backfilled?
Never put back in.
So, so two things have happened with Human Services. One was a cut because of the recession, that we cut all sorts of things by 9% or...
I don't believe Human Services got a reduction.
Oh, no, we didn't. We didn't. That's right, we didn't do that. Okay, that's right. But, but the $75,000, though, for good reason, and it's Human Services-related, but that is less money that's in the pot for the committee to consider. All right, so I guess, so in terms of a June 2nd question, that's not really a question for next fiscal year. It's more, but we can still direct staff to come back in October with that kind of information, so we can make a decision at that point.
Okay.
Does that sound right? Is that accurate, I guess I'm asking?
Yes, that's accurate.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Murillo.
And I wanted to express my support for the stipend for our design review boards. I think they work really hard and give a lot of their time. They're professionals, giving their time. I'm supportive of an allocation to the 211 program and to Casa Esperanza. I'm going to have to get, think a little bit about $500,000, but certainly, I appreciate their mission and the services, and Pirate coming today. But that's a big request, and I think we're going to have to think about that. And I'm way in support of the Community Choice Aggregation Program. And that would be a great way for the city of Santa Barbara to be ahead of taking, taking action against climate change. And I look forward to talking with the CEC people more about their, about their plan. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I comment on Casa Esperanza and the homeless individual pilot? That was actually, they were at Casa Esperanza, but it's a really good example of the pilot project that they're doing on the Milpus Corridor for Housing First. It was really a collaboration of C3H, ADMHS, Casa Esperanza, you know, everyone, I think he's like the, he's the first person that was a chronically homeless person on the, in the Milpus area that they've wrapped their arms around and gotten housed. So that's a good example of where we're going with homelessness.
Thank you. And for Mr. White and Mr. Rouse, we invited those who had outside funding requests to speak up right at the beginning of the meeting, so that's part of what you're hearing. You'll probably get contacted by some of them. Mr. Hart?
Well, just to follow up with this fiscal year CDBG issue, and I don't remember specifically how the process works, but is, are the folks who fall below the cut line, are they ranked in order that the committee would feel comfortable, that if we did actually add money in this fiscal year, that that would, that would conform to their process?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, I'm not sure what the Community Development Human Services Committee's rationale was for those that did not receive any funding. I know that they, they do a contingency every year, because oftentimes, we don't know what our Community Development Block Grant funding actually is before it comes to council or before the committee has to approve it. And this year, they, it was their desire to increase the top-rated ones, rather than giving money to the ones that did not receive any money. If they got extra money, that was their contingency. To give, I believe it was up to $5,000 or to the applicant's request for the first, first-rated in the first priority, and then moving down the list.
I understand. Maybe you could share that with us then?
Okay.
Because I think that's relevant to this conversation.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Ms. Macias. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Irene Macias, Library Director. Pleased to present the library's FY15 budget for the coming fiscal year. This is the second year of a two-year budget. We don't have a lot of changes in terms of the financial aspect, but we have a lot to share with you about the library and what we've been doing, our activities. And just wanted to say that it's really been a year, and actually several years, of refocusing our priorities, taking on a more entrepreneurial role as we've gone through our fundraising campaign, and actually have been writing some substantial grants to enhance our services. We also have leveraged the use of technology to allow us to get by with fewer staff members, and we did lose 25% of our staffing during the recession. And we also have formed many partnerships. You'll hear during the presentation of partnerships we have with many organizations in the community. So it really has allowed us to come back in a very good way from the recession. The presentation tonight, this afternoon, I promise I won't go on till the evening, consists of a department overview with some benchmarks, services and programs, our fee changes. Scott Love, Library Services Manager, will present the General Fund budget, and Library Services Manager Margaret Esther will talk about the County Library Fund. Just a quick glance at our org chart, we are one of the smaller departments. These two managers are the only managers, and between them, they share responsibility for the operation. Scott Love manages the Central Library and has some system-wide responsibilities, including technical and digital services, and Margaret oversees all the branches. Her system-wide responsibilities include collection, development, and system administration. There are two funds in the library, the General Fund, which funds the two city libraries, Central and Eastside, and provides administrative and support services to the entire system. And then the County Library Fund, which supports the libraries that we operate through contracts with the county and the city of Goleta. We are also a member of the Black Gold Cooperative System. That is a system comprised of six jurisdictions in the tri-counties. We have a shared automation system, which allows us to share materials across the way. We also, the Black Gold system has been hit by some budget cuts as they received substantial funding from the state. So it was kind of a double hit when we lost some city, when the library lost city and state funding, and then the Black Gold Cooperative also lost funding. Wanted to share some benchmarks with you and compare our two city libraries, and again, this is just our two city libraries, because they do have considerably higher funding than the county fund libraries. But I wanted to point out that comparing ourselves to the state and national averages, we have quite a good ratio of materials per capita. Circulation per capita is higher than both of the averages, and we have a very high visits per capita, so, and ultimately, we're on the lower end in terms of paid full-time equivalents compared to the national and state averages. So we really make good use of our money. And also, at the bottom, the program attendance per capita, you can see that that is significantly higher than the Californian state averages. Wanted to review our circulation over the last, a little more than a decade. Despite what people say, people are still checking out, using their libraries and checking out materials. The yellow line is the two city libraries, and the blue line is the four county libraries. And we wanted to highlight the circulation of our digital products, because that has really grown astronomically. We really can't keep up with the demand for it. It's really phenomenal. One thing that I like to share is that we purchase our audio, our downloadable audio and eBooks through our cooperative with Black Gold, so we're able to provide a much larger collection to the, to the cooperative than if it was simply a Santa Barbara purchase. Just wanted to review some of our services. Library to Go is our most recent branded service. This is 24-hour access to many technology products. Scott will talk a little bit about some of them. But we do have a very active adult literacy program. We never forget that there are actually people in the community that struggle to read. And we have numerous programs from early learning. We do have some programs for seniors, cultural events that are supported by the Friends of the Library, and the after-school art program at the Eastside Libraries, a partnership with the Santa Barbara Museum of Art. The homework service that we started recently at the Central Library was possible because of a donation from the Junior League. And I believe I mentioned this to you in March, when I presented the Children's Library Project. We had received a notice that we had been awarded a grant. We didn't know the amount. We had requested $120,000 from the State Library, and we heard yesterday that we got $80,000. So we are going to be able to expand that homework service to a family literacy center, because we saw that the parents showed up, they brought their kids to the homework help because they themselves aren't able to help their kids. And so, rather than just sitting there, waiting for the kids, we're going to help them to help their kids choose books, how to read books to their kids. So we're really very excited about this. And looking at our total budget...
Irene, excuse me. You said they're not able to help their kids. Is it a linguistic problem, or what is it?
You know, if someone has some math homework, the parent may not have gone to more than third grade.
Right, I understand.
And so they can't help.
Got it.
It can be also a linguistic problem, too. A variety of factors. And so here is our budget, and it's always telling to see that the two city library, the budget for the two city libraries is close to $5 million, and the other four have a budget of $2 million. And that's the differential in the funding.
I guess this is a place to ask, is the county increasing its funding for the county libraries that we administer?
Councilmember Hart, no, they're not. They had reduced their funding about four years ago, three years ago. So we had two years of a 15% reduction. Last year, the Board of Supervisors at their budget hearings voted to restore the funding, and we do know that they'll continue the restoration, but there's no plan for increased funding.
Not even a cost of living increase?
No.
Nothing? Interesting. We're being asked for the 211 funds, too, from the county? So, oh, I guess there's connections there, so thank you.
And we only have a couple of proposed fee changes. We are recommending the elimination of the $1 hold fee. The history here is that for quite a number of years, we had a 50-cent fee for holds, that's requesting materials from another library. When we lost, when Black Gold lost its funding from the state, the funding was called a transaction-based reimbursement, so we received funds for every book that we loaned to libraries that weren't in our jurisdiction. That was eliminated, and that was what supported the delivery, the delivery fee, or the delivery charges for moving the books around. What we found when we did that, so we increased the holds fee to make up for that, but we found that there are many communities that couldn't afford that $1. And so their holds, their holds fee, requests went down dramatically. So certain, certain aspects of our community weren't able to take advantage of that. So we decided that we would eliminate the fee and try to manage the potential explosion in requests by limiting the number of holds that anyone could place at one time. So we are happy to recommend a, this will mean about a $30,000 reduction for the General Fund.
What's the limit? Is it like per request of how, certain number of books, or...
Right. Currently, I think, we have a limit, you can only have 100 items checked out to you at any given time, but you can only have 10 hold, you will only, effective July 1st, you will only be able to have 10 holds pending.
Okay.
So that probably will not go over so well with some of our very heavy users, but it will be really a huge impact to those who don't have the funding.
Would it be too much of an administrative burden to charge a fee for more than 10? It would be?
Our automated system can't...
I'm seeing a lot of this.
The automated system can't make that differentiation.
I see, okay, all right, thank you.
How many people do you think that's going to affect? That's, that's a lot of material.
I think we thought it was fewer than 100.
That many, though? Would request, and throughout...
All of Black Gold. Our surface area is almost 230,000, so, and the 100, it would impact about 100 people in the entire Black Gold system. We looked at the data...
Well, that's county, that's county-wide, then, right?
San Luis Obispo County, Santa Barbara County.
I see, okay.
We've had a collection agency for quite a long time and charged $10 for anyone that was sent to the collection. It was an oversight that we had never added it to our fee schedule, so we're correcting the oversight. Now turn it over to Scott Love to talk about the General Fund.
And Mayor Schneider and Councilmember, I will go through, probably pretty quickly, our changes in the budget and talk about some of our initiatives for the next year. When we look at the General Fund revenues, the changes to the, the plan are fairly minimal. You'll see the $30,000 reduction, and that's due to the holds fee being eliminated, the projected holds fee being eliminated. And then the, the other big change there is a 101, 960, and that is the county's restoration, essentially, the county's restoration of the per capita funding, which happened last June, so it was put into the first quarter changes last year, but now it's part of the budget this year. It's good to remember that we're essentially a service operation, so the majority of our budget does go to salaries... budget does go to salaries and benefits. But as you can see on here with the book acquisitions, we do have it up to 9%, almost $420,000, which is the highest it's been since 2005. So it's, and part of that's due to a $30,000 addition this year.
If I might ask, I know people give the library books, used books. Is that more trouble than beneficial?
I wouldn't say that. I say, Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, no, it isn't. We do want them to be in brand-new condition. Often, they are additional copies of the newest books out there, and we add them like crazy. There is definitely a cost to doing that because all our other materials come to us fully processed. Essentially, we take them out of the box, just have to look them, give them a look over once or twice, and do something with the automated system, and they're ready to go. So those need to fully, fully process. But we looked at numbers recently, and I think it's somewhere around 30% of our materials are donations.
So, and the ones that we don't keep, we give away, throw away?
Sell.
Sell. Great.
We have book sales at all the libraries, yes. So on the appropriations end here, the, again, we're seeing an increase in the salaries and benefits. That's just the COLAs and the cost, the minimum wage increase. And you see a healthy adjustment there to the book acquisitions, and a lot of that is due to the county per capita being restored, plus the additional $30,000 that's recommended for the collection budget this year. So we had three proposed service enhancements. The first one I've mentioned already a couple of times, the $30,000 added to book acquisitions. Some of that will be used at Eastside, but the majority of it will be used at the Central Library. It's all going to be used on purchasing children's materials, updating parts of the collection that have been worn out and overused, and help to build the collection for the grand opening of the Children's Library next year. The second part is enhancing the Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi at our libraries is good, but it's often not as good as you even get in your homes, and when you consider the number of users that we have on it, it's, it's kind of crazy. And so we're looking at increasing it by about 10 times at Eastside and at the Central Library, plus the staff will be able to have dedicated use of it for, we try to do training classes. Sometimes the training classes have failed because the Wi-Fi isn't working well. And we can also do some mobile reference with it that way. Also, the Central Library being such an old facility, there are not nearly enough electrical outlets. It can get unsafe. We're constantly going around to the public and asking them to please unplug their devices, which they strew across the floor in an unsafe manner. And this will be adding electrical outlets to every one of the study carrels on the upper floor, which I think is 26. And also, when Director Macias talks later about the Children's Library Project, we will be putting more electrical outlets on the main floor as part of that, too. So our accomplishments for this year, I thought were important. You'll see our new website there. We're about ready to go live with that, the end of this month, maybe worst-case scenario, the very beginning of June. We're really excited about it. Staff have been putting a lot of work into it. And with that new website, we are now just officially unveiling our brand-new logo with what we call the Book of Paradise. And so we're kind of rebranding ourselves. We'll be doing a lot of changes around that. It was also exciting, we did the big read. I'm not sure if any of the councilmembers or the mayor were involved in that, but we gave out over 2,000 books to high school kids from Solvang to Carpentaria in our service area, and had a bunch of events, and it all culminated with a packed house at the Marjory Luke Theater where the author spoke about the book, The Things They Carried. We started the Zineo and Freegal services. These are kind of unique services. Zineo is the downloadable magazines. Freegal is downloadable and streaming music. What is unique about both of these is you get to keep the material once you take it. Zineo is many of the popular magazines, magazines that maybe through budget cuts, we have cut sometimes, so we're able to get them back here. That's a Black Gold-wide service. Freegal is only offered for the Santa Barbara patrons. It's not Black Gold-wide. You're allowed to download three songs a week. You keep those songs. It's everything in the Sony catalog, which includes Epic Records, and you can stream up to three hours a day. It's a really neat service. We mentioned how good our program attendance is up since fiscal year 12, I think, when we were, had the biggest cuts, we're up by 45% in attendance. And one of the reasons we're able to do that, and the staff doesn't go completely insane, is our self-check kiosks, which are getting us 80% of the checkout. That's really what allowed us to reopen on Mondays, is that two years ago now, efficiently, very efficiently, and reopen Eastside for more hours. So the key objectives, we're going to be adding electronic screens in the lobby at the Central Library, so we stop printing out everything. You can also display more. Staff always fight over who gets to put up their poster for their program. We're going to be overseeing, we are, as we speak, overseeing final design and construction on the Children's Library. We'll be completing final design on the Library Plaza Improvement Project. And the library, along with the Friends of the Library, the Library Foundation, and volunteers together, were able to reach our campaign goal, or our fundraising goal for this year, $1 million. And that just came in this last week, and we are hoping, or we will raise, $750,000 this next year. We will also be upgrading all the PCs at Eastside and Central Library, newer versions, Windows 7, newer version of Office, to help better serve the public. And I will turn it back over to our Director Macias.
Thank you, Scott. I did want to add that that $1 million was raised through some wonderful efforts from community volunteers. So the partnerships I described extend into the fundraising arena, and we're incredibly grateful for that support. And we are very excited. In March, you approved the contract for final design for the Children's Library. We got to work immediately. We are meeting with the architect. We've integrated someone from our capital campaign to help with all the donor signs and recognition. But as I said in the presentation in March, we are expanding to 6,300 square feet. We're really excited about the cozy reading nooks and to be able to have a dedicated space for the various developmental ages for kids. The staff is really thrilled that they'll be able to monitor the entire area. They right now have driveway mirrors to assist them in checking on the kids. And ultimately, we want it to be a place where kids can come and explore, and really to help them become the person they want to be and to be a productive member of our community. And the goal is to have kids beg their parents to take them to the library. So we're looking at completing the design phase in the next couple months. We've been working with facilities, and they feel pretty certain that by December, we will be starting the construction. Another project that we have going, and that the council approved funding for final design, is the Library Plaza Project. When we started on this back in 2009 or 2010, it was a much smaller project, but when we learned that the Museum of Art was also beginning a major expansion and had some needs and desires of the space between the two institutions, we decided to coordinate and make it as welcoming and inviting a place that it could be. So it's taking a little bit longer than we anticipated, and just trying to coordinate two different projects has been somewhat of a challenge, but we are ready to go back to HLC, probably in June, we're hoping. With our design, I know that the museum is going back to HLC this month to look at some historic elements. So it's very exciting, but it does, it has been, I think, a larger project than we anticipated when we first started out. But as you can see, the old picture on the left at the bottom is the Faulkner Gallery as it was built, and the design that we're creating does want to bring back some of those elements and make it as serene and inviting a place as it used to be. And now, Margaret, we'll talk about the County Library Fund.
I want to make sure, ma'am. Good afternoon, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and councilmembers. I'm going to be reviewing the County Library Fund. The cities of Solvang and Carpentaria continue to support the operations in both of those libraries, and the various Friends organizations provide much-needed financial support in each county library. In addition to the county per capita funding, the Goleta Library is fortunate to have a parcel tax in place that supports the library, and we recently completed an agreement with the City of Goleta for library operations. As we indicated in the general fund, we anticipate a reduced revenue in the fines and fees due to the elimination of the hold fee for fiscal '15. There's an increase in the revenue, therefore intergovernmental, and that's due to the restored per capita from the county. As directed by the county, we continue to use reserve funds to balance the county library fund and retain current open hours and levels of service. The reduction in salaries that you see is due to the fact that we had three vacancies that were filled with Step 1 employees, and we have a slight increase in the book budget. Again, this is possible due to the restored county per capita funding. Thank you.
Okay. We're coming to the end here. The Library Board met on April 21st. We actually had a televised meeting, the first ever, and so we were able to talk about our library services to a larger part of the community. And in the end, the board voted to, or recommended to, that the council approved the proposed budget, including the proposal to remove the hold fee. And that's the end of our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Well, something must be going right because this time last year, there were a lot more people in the room for various reasons, so that's good. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I noticed it seems to be very successful use of, I would say, informal security personnel. What's the deal? Sort of retired-looking folks walking around in tennis shirts quietly speaking to people.
Those are polo shirts.
Polo shirts, thank you.
No, they're, I do believe we have one gentleman who's a bit older, but the others are, a couple of them are actually ex-military. That's a position we created a number of years ago, actually before I came on, three years ago. And it's kind of, they help monitor what's going on. I mean, they give assistance to the public that needs them. They work very well. They're well-known by the community service officers and the police department. And it takes that away from the librarians and library staff trying to help the other patrons, and they're able to go outside and monitor the grounds. It's very successful.
Right. It's a classic example of just presence making a difference.
Yes.
Not saying anything. I mean, it's, anyway, I noticed that very much. Thank you.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, I do want to clarify that they are paid positions. Mr. Hart?
Well, I just, it's really impressive what you've done. It's seeing the P3s and all the things, the capital campaign, the progress and all the capital work. You've done a fantastic job in a very stressful time, coming back from cuts. So maybe I do need to answer, ask a couple more questions about the county relationship. I thought I had this down, but I'm getting hazy, too. So the county contribution goes to the county system, and that is segregated from the city system, except, isn't there overlap in terms of the per capita contribution from the county?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, yes. The contract that, under which we operate those systems, is a four-way contract with the county, the City of Lompoc, the City of Santa Maria, and the City of Santa Barbara. The county distributes to every jurisdiction per capita funding for every resident. So we do receive $6.90 times the city's population of 88,000 residents. So that's over $600,000 that comes to the general fund. In addition, we do charge an administrative fee of 9% for providing services. At the county branches, as if most of you have been to some of those branches, they're very small operations. They're the, the public-facing part of the library, but all the, most of the backwork stuff, or a lot, I should say, most of the backroom functions take place at the library, as does all our PR. We write the press releases, we do the advertising, so that's the administrative fee.
So you're, when you go to the county as a department head for the county effectively, and you ask for, or you work with the county administrator to come up with the budget for the county's library funds, you, your goal was to restore the lost funding as opposed to the 3% COLA, or did you press all the way?
The contract with the county is administered by the Community Services Director. Until recently, that was Herman Parker. So we meet with Herman and talk about our needs, Mr. Parker, and then Mr. Parker would work with the county staff to determine what the recommendation would be. Last year, the staff recommendation was a status quo, and it was the Board of Supervisors that suggested and then voted for the restoration of the 15% cut.
Okay. So we're in the same situation this year where the staff recommendation is a status quo?
Correct.
Now I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Ms. Esther, I'm looking at County Library Fund revenues. What's the difference between donations and library gifts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilperson Maria. The donations are the funds that we get from the Friends that I mentioned. The Friends have committed to them for this coming year. The gifts tend to be larger, that have been established, larger funds that we use. Again, we talked about using reserves. That includes sometimes there's a large gift that we use to balance the fund.
Okay. Thank you.
I could clarify that. The donations are anticipated funds for the coming year, and gifts are monies that we have in hand but have not used.
Okay. Thank you. And in terms of your capital needs, where are you, Ms. Macias, with the second-floor patio? Is that something that's, it's a long-term goal to reopen it to the public of the main library?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, we definitely have a strong interest in reopening it. Each year, we look at our priorities, and we continue to have it on the capital improvement program. It has not been funded yet. And once we finish the Children's Library, we will look at, at trying to find the funds for that. I believe it's about a quarter of a million dollars. The cost is about a quarter of a million dollars.
Okay. Well, that's on my list for your information. So the Goleta Library is supported by a parcel tax. That's some kind of community services district, I think, and it, they also tax people to, for like a lighting district, whatever. Can we do a parcel tax for our libraries, Mr. Armstrong?
And you could place one on the ballot, and then if it was approved, you could do it.
So we would have to convince the voters that increasing our library services would be a positive thing for the community. I think we might be able to do it.
That's correct, and it does require a two-thirds vote.
Say that again?
It requires a two-thirds vote.
Darn it. And then, Ms. Macias, finally, I don't see any big requests from you, so I, do you need more money for your, your book acquisitions? What's on your wish list there? You're being very modest today and not- You're being very modest today and not demanding anything.
Thank you for asking that question. We anticipate more staffing needs once the children's library is completed. And so we're being very careful in terms of looking at the staffing levels that we currently have. We've made some changes in terms of oversight. We promoted Jace Turner to a supervising librarian. So we're working very methodically to sort ourselves out. As I said, we're still feeling the effects of the recession. We lost positions that weren't the ones we would have eliminated, but those were positions that became vacant by retirements or promotions. So we do have needs. I definitely will be wanting to add a children's librarian. We had two librarians at the Central Library in the past, a senior and a librarian, too, that was specifically assigned to children's at Central. We lost that second position, and we'll definitely be looking to add that in the coming year when we have a new children's library. We have, as I mentioned, we got the $80,000 grant to expand in some of the areas that we were looking at. So we do have quite a few needs. One of the things that we're looking to do is, we just got a hearing loop in the Faulkner Gallery, but we don't have an audio or video system there. So one thing we'd like to do is to fix that up with the overhead projector and the audio system so that that can be used by people who have hearing disabilities and just improve the features of the room. It is a rental space. And just this week, the staff has submitted a request that they do periodically, and that is to go back and digitize the local newspaper. We have it on microfilm. Some of the reels are pretty old and falling apart. And there is no, the news press does have a digital record back to 1996. We have the film all the way back to 1937. So that's a project that we're looking at. So we have a lot of things that we're looking at. We just want to be very careful about what choices we make.
Well, some of our revenue, our tax revenue sources are coming back. And as the liaison to the Library Board, I look forward to working with you and identifying what you need to serve the community and, in particular, our children and families. And then on one final question on the children's library, you don't do any, have anything to do with transportation to the library, right? That is something that schools or organizations organize or parents.
That's correct. But we do have a very strong outreach component for our youth services. And actually, this is the time where, we regularly go out and do storytimes. We go out to fairs. We go to PTA nights. We go to any type of family event where we think we could publicize the library. We go out into the Spanish-speaking community. We have several bilingual staff members. And we also, so at this point in time, we're gearing up for the summer reading program, which starts June 10th. The theme is Fizz Boom Read, so it does have a science component. But we actually train volunteers to go out into the community, to speak at schools and other places to the community about the program. So even though we don't bring them to the library, we go out and publicize the events.
That has my interest because once we, you, build the children's library, everyone should have access to it. And I think some families are a little more lucky in this town. They'll be able to bring their children there. But every child should have access to it, so.
There are several bus lines that come directly to the library. There's one on, a stop on Anacapa that services several lines, and then there's one in front of the museum. So it is an easy bus trip, I think, for many people.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Macias, I was kind of following it up on the children's services, the homework program. That's available system-wide?
No, it's not. Currently, there has been a homework program at the Carpenteria Library for many years, more than 10 years, funded entirely by the Friends of the Library. We had that request at Central Library for several years, and it was only through the funding from the Junior League that we were able to start it. We actually do use volunteers, but this new grant that we've received will help us continue the program and even enhance it.
That was the $8,000 grant?
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, sorry.
Eighty.
Yeah. And do you know how many clients that represents or in terms of, you know, what kind of usership we have with that program?
Gwen Wegi, our Youth Services Librarian, is here, and I'll let her answer that question.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rouse, since January, when we started piloting the project, I believe we've had each month 40 to 60 new students and some that repeat.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you update us on the Library Plaza project a little bit? What, I know that there's money in there for plans. Could you describe just what the status is of that project and what the art museum is doing and so forth?
Right. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the council approved an additional $100,000 to continue work on the final design. At this point, we are talking to the museum about the potential placement of a transformer. They are doing huge renovation, and so one of the issues that has come up was their need for a place for the transformer. So we've been looking at different locations to place this. They are also going to add an exit, an emergency exit on the east side of the building facing the library. So our plan for the paseo will need to accommodate a landing for that exit. They, we're looking at receiving or backing trucks up in the area in Annapahmoo Street that is off the table. So we've gone through a number of issues that we've had to work out. So it's taking more time than it would have if we were the only ones doing a project.
So it's not a co-use of that space or sort of anything that's, they're not putting an entrance or doing chobot work on that side of the library to, I mean, of the museum in order to make use of that space?
No, nothing.
It's more utilitarian what's going on here.
Yes, utilitarian, although ultimately, we do want it to be an enhanced space that we can have events at, as I've spoken about. But also, the museum has used the back plaza many times for some of their night's events. So we're excited about bringing those events into a nicer space and, in essence, sharing it with the museum in terms of events.
And then, as far as funding goes, we're just getting the plans done and then looking for the next round on that.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
And I might add, I think the art museum wants to use some of our space to assist in their project. And so at some point, we will be talking with the council about, you know, how do we equitably, you know, pay for the use of that space? And then also, how do we make sure that, you know, it's not just a utility area for the art museum, but it's beneficial for both of us? And at this point, there is no money budgeted for actual construction. And part of the reason we've held off on that is, one, we need to negotiate with the art museum on, you know, on the improvements that they want to do and figure out a win-win solution, and then figure out what the bottom line is for construction.
Thank you.
And I would add, another of the issues that we're talking about is their request to install a geothermal heating and cooling system. And because they have no space surrounding their building, they've asked for whether we would consider allowing that on library property. The initial discussions, they offered that they would be able to provide heating and cooling for the library. Ultimately, that really wasn't an option, so we learned that a few weeks ago. So they recently did some tests, some drilling tests to see, to discover exactly how many wells they would need to drill, and then we'll come back and have discussions about that, and we'll be coming to council.
Thank you.
Mr. Hart? And then we have a public comment speaker.
Is there just a physical limitation on the capacity of that to generate heat and cooling for the museum itself? And there's not enough capacity to add the library? Is that a technical problem?
No, it turned out that they would have to be a utility to be able to provide, to provide it to another organization.
Really? By state law or federal law or something?
Mr. Casey?
Utility law?
Addison law.
Some stupid.
Madam Mayor, there's the utility issue. I think Mr. Dewey, our facilities manager, also said we've invested quite a bit in upgrading our heating and cooling systems on the library. And so moving over to a geothermal system right now wouldn't really make financial sense for us since we've just invested so much in new utilities. Maybe later on down the road, we could tie in, but he wasn't as excited about short-term hooking up into the system.
Well, that helps. But is, this is sort of a one-time opportunity to tap geothermal sources, isn't it? Anyway, this is probably much more detailed than we have time for today, but thanks.
And we do have geothermal right across the street. So we know it can be done.
Right, that's what's used at the county courthouse.
We have a successful project at the county courthouse, which worked, which is under lawn, and so putting it in and re-landscaping on top is fairly simple. The complicating part here is they want to put the geothermal system underneath the entire plaza, including the paseos and the driveways and maybe even the sidewalks, completely surrounding the library. So it's a pretty intense system that takes a lot of destruction to occur, a lot of inconvenience, and then putting it back on top. And how do you share the cost that goes in with that and all sorts of things? So it's pretty complicated.
Okay, Mr. Shankman?
In this particular forum, is it open for quest, can I ask a question to have it answered or am I just supposed to deliver a statement?
You can make your statement. You can include questions, and we can ask those questions when you're done.
Okay, well, you know, we, I addressed my findings to the city council yesterday, on Tuesday, and I also shared this during the library commission, so I'm not going to repeat it. I do have some questions as to, as a member of the public, in trying to get some work done, there's a lot of interference. I have to use the phone. And I know that in the old days...
You can address us.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you. And I know that when, in the old days, we used to have typewriters, and we would use typewriters to get things done. And, you know, we had these rooms in the basement, you know, when I was a kid, and we would type our documents out, and they were very loud, and we had these little rooms to be able to do our work. And now the basement has been completely blocked off from the public. And as somebody who is attempting to get work done, sometimes I have to make a phone call. I have no real access, you know, or marginally generally applied, where I would be able to talk on the phone and do my homework in a place where I could, where I could be more effective, especially in the digital era. And wondering whether the, excuse me, and wondering whether the council and whether the library staff could consider opening up the basement so that some of us kids like me can get on the computer and use our phones and be productive.
Thank you.
You know, in a quiet, private place. You know, a lot of times, there's passwords that need to be audio transmitted. And, you know, when you're conveying that kind of information earshot, it compromises security. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just, that's fine. I'll just say the basement's going to be for the children's library, but certainly as upstairs where the children's library is now, it's reconfigured. That feedback you can consider in terms of, but usually, we're very quiet in the library and not speaking very much, so that sounds like a patio thing. Okay, any other questions? Great, well, great work, and thank you very much. We're adjourned.